I'd like to call the December 2018 Meeting of the Board of Education to order. We will begin with an invocation. Ms. Etheridge?
Good evening. 'Twas the week before Christmas at the elementary school and all the weary teachers were losing their cool. Santa searched for the ones that gave their time in their hearts. He wanted to thank them, but how could he start? So many hours they worked without fuss. They worked for the children, they all gave so much. What could he do to show them their worth, the difference they made with all their hard work? "I know," Santa said, "I'll open their eyes. They'll see clearly the impact they have on small lives. They'll see smiles on faces that their work puts there. They'll see kindness in children taught the lesson to care. They'll hear laughter from families that share in their days. They'll get hugs that without them would just go away. And at night when they rest, they'll sleep soundly and know their teaching hearts keep the children aglow." Thank you.
Now Principal Greta Nelson from Shawboro Elementary will introduce a student who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. I'd like to ask Emily Jo Morgan to come up and Emily Jo Harris, given her mama's maiden name, to come up and join me to lead us in the pledge.
Would everybody please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we will have the swearing in of three board members that were just recently elected. And I'll introduce Ray Matusko, Clerk of Courts, who will do the swearing in.
Thank you very much for the school board's commitment upon it for inviting me out to do this. It's truly an honor. And this time it's particularly an honor because I still have the job. I'm elected also and put by Senior Assistant Superior Court Judge Jerry Tillman, the mayor. Karen Etheridge? Do you, Karen Etheridge, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and that you be faithful and your true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, to help you out.
I will.
And do you, Karen Etheridge, solemnly swear that you will perform the duties of the office of Board of Education member for Currituck County Schools to the best of your knowledge, skill, and ability to help you out.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you would like to introduce your member.
This is my daughter, Abby Rose.
Do you, Janet Rose, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and that you be faithful and your true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to help you out.
I will.
And do you, Janet Rose, solemnly swear that you will perform the duties of the office of a member of the Currituck County School Board for Currituck County to the best of your knowledge, skill, and ability to help you out.
I will. Thank you.
Do you, Dr. Bill Dobney, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and that you be faithful and your true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, to help you out.
I will.
And do you, Dr. Bill Dobney, solemnly swear that you will perform the duties of your office as a member of the Currituck County School Board, to the best of your knowledge, skill, and ability, according to the laws, to help you out.
I will.
Next, we have two school spotlights. We will begin with Shawboro Elementary School and Principal Greta Nelson.
Good evening. So at Shawboro, we have buddy classes. And that's where we take a primary class and an intermediate class, and we partner them up. And they do activities throughout the year together, such as they read together, they work on projects together. So two of our classes are here tonight, representatives from those classes. It's a fifth grade class and a second grade class, and they did a STEAM project together on sound. And so I'm going to invite Ms. Judy Kraus and Mrs. Paula Holler to come up and join me. And they're going to tell you just a little bit about it. And then they're going to invite some of their kids up to tell you what they've been doing to reduce sound in our cafeteria.
Good evening. I'm Judy Kraus. I'm the second grade teacher at Shawboro Elementary. And our second and fifth grade classes have worked really hard on the STEAM project. And they've enjoyed it, we've enjoyed it. We're working on reducing the noise pollution in our cafeteria by putting up sound absorbing panels. Several of our parents and our staff have donated towels towards this project. And we had one volunteer who volunteered or donated the wood, the hardware, and student toolboxes. So you will see some of the things that were donated and some of what our panels look like. Our volunteer, Keri Kraus, my brother, he was the one that donated the materials for putting the panels together. And he's also a retired COA instructor in the technology department. And so he also worked with some of the JAPNAP early college students in the technology department. We're also going to utilize him. He also is an expert in broadcast engineering. So he's going to help us place the panels strategically throughout the walls in the cafeteria so we get the maximum bang for our buck. Our project is ongoing. It'll be ongoing probably most of the year. So after this month is over, maybe if you have some time, you can stop by and check out our cafeteria and see our progress.
That's awesome.
I am the fifth grade teacher, ELA in Social Studies, and I have three of my kids here tonight. And I'm super impressed with everything they did. As soon as I asked them to present here tonight, they got on their Chromebooks immediately and opened up a Google Drive that they all shared with one another. I didn't even know they know how to do that, but they did. And they were writing their speeches for tonight. So that's the ELA side coming out in my kids. And they were pretty excited to come here tonight and share with you. So I think we're going to call them up so they can tell you a little bit more about what we've done.
Also, in your packets, you'll notice that there are actually, the first three pages of the STEM project are just standards that this one STEAM project covered. And then the other two, the flyers, were ones that the fifth grade students actually made them. That was out of that.
Did you get enough towels, Ms. Kraus?
Actually, we have enough towels to make the seven completed ones that we have already. So we're going to be asking for more donations of towels in the future because we're going to need more than just seven panels.
If we can have the fifth graders and the second graders come up, we'll introduce you. These are examples of our panels that we've been working really hard on. And this is Rory Ingram, Emily Jo Harris, and Isabella Vaughn.
And this is Kaylee Truitt, and Taylor Hunt, and Justice Desante. I'm sorry, I know. And I even practiced it fifteen minutes straight. Desatell. This is Lorelei Walsh and Brandon Hitzler.
It's right in the table. I'm not sure it's working.
Is the mic turned on?
I can't tell. I mean, it looked like it's on. It's not working. The green light's on, but it's not working. Go ahead and talk real loud.
Good evening. My name is Gary Truman. I like the buddy groups because they're fun to hang out with. They let me do some stuff with the towels. They let me tack and they let me sew and place down the towels. Thank you.
I am the seventh grade in this group. I like working with all buddies because they solve problems and let us share. All buddies are nice to us. They keep our work must be good.
Good evening. My name is Tilly. My class shop is country air. I like how fun it is to work with my buddies. Lila, Laura, Jared, and Dee Dee, friends from the same school.
Good evening. My name is Bella Vaughn. And today I will tell you about book buddies. Now, I know they're called book buddies, but young, reading books isn't all we do. Book buddies is a chance for older and younger kids to work together. Yes, sometimes it really is just reading a book with each other and teaching younger kids how to read. But our book buddies is a chance to work together and help the entire school. The project that we're working on now is a sound absorbing project. Ms. Kraus and Ms. Holler's class are working hard together to get the project down. So we help the entire school. Without the work of our classes on this project, some of us could lose hearing because of how loud it can get in the cafeteria. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Emily Jo Harris. My class is a buddy class. I've been working on sound absorbing panels to help decrease the sound in the cafeteria. I've learned that if we do not put something in the cafeteria, we can lose hearing. Ms. Kraus found a website called New Orleans. We plan to show us her research. We learned that if the decibel levels get high enough that from the sound that you are making or listening to, you can start to lose hearing. If your ears hear zero to eighty decibels, you can stand hearing that sound for twelve hours. That's like hearing whisper voices, the dishwasher, a vacuum cleaner, raindrops, and an acoustic guitar. If your ears hear eighty to one hundred decibels, they can't stand that sound up to eight hours before losing any hearing. That's like hearing city traffic, a chainsaw, football games, hair dryer, and a laundry. If your ears hear one hundred and more decibels, they can only stand that sound for fifteen minutes before losing any hearing. That's like hearing a brass band, an iPod with its line up all the way, a drumline rehearsal, a leaf blower, a rock concert, and a jet taking off. Right now, our decibel low range in the cafeteria is between seventy-two and eighty decibels. When we add the sound of glory panels in our cafeteria, we won't have to worry about losing any hearing.
Hello. My name is Rory Ingram, and I am going to tell you what my class and our book buddies are doing. We are doing a sound absorbing panel project, and I am going to tell you how we did it. First, we found out what we needed for the project. Then, we separated my class and our book buddies into groups of six or seven. Then, we put on our safety goggles because we are working with screws and wood. First, we put our four pieces of wood into a square shape. Then, to make it stable and it doesn't fall apart, we put in L brackets in the top right and left corners. Then, one person in each group would use the screwdriver to put the screws in the wood. After we put all those screws in the L brackets to hold it in, we picked out a towel to use for the project because we realized that towels absorb more sound than anything else we tested. We stretched out the towel so it could fit the frame. Then, we used a hammer to nail down the towel so it stays in place. Next, the teachers stapled the towels into the wood. After that, each group took three or four towels to put into the back of the frame. We called them insulation towels. We took four students and sewed the insulation towels forms together. Last, we stapled the insulation towels into the frame. That is how we did our sound absorbing project. Thank you.
Thank you all. I have a question. One of the fifth graders may have answered this. Do you know what the decibel level, or can you guess what the decibel level will go down to once all the panels are installed?
Don't know.
They don't work.
Well, I just want to say, I'm very impressed. As a person who's already losing some hearing and having hearing aids, it is important. And you're exactly right. The louder the sounds are, the worse the hearing loss becomes. So I'm impressed.
I think we were really surprised when we saw the decibel levels because I believe when she tested them, there were a few fourth graders in there, but it was mostly fifth grade, and that's really, really high. And they're in there eating lunch for over twenty minutes, and that could cause hearing loss. And I don't think any of us realize that. You can't hear each other when you're talking. And hopefully, this will cut down on some of that chatter that's going on.
Anybody else have any questions for them?
Well, I want to know how it works out because if it reduces it really good, then I got some sons and they got friends, and maybe we'll install some at my house, too. But anyhow, it's a great project, and thank you for coming and sharing it with us.
Okay, before you sit down, I'd like all the students to come right up here. Because you're on television throughout the county now, and I want everybody to be able to hear your name. And I know the microphone wasn't working that well.
You can wave to yourself.
So one at a time, come here and tell me your name.
My name is Bella Vaughn.
My name is Emily Jo Harris.
My name is Rory Ingram Jr.
My name is Taylor Jane Hunt.
My name is Justice Desatell.
My name is Kaylee Truman.
My name is Lorelei Walsh.
Way in the nose lip.
Good job, good job.
Y'all did a great job. Thank you very much.
Good job, guys. You did great.
Ms. Kraus from Holler, thank you very much for what you do for the kids of Currituck County.
Dr. Dobney and fellow board members and student board members, I want you to pay close attention to that listing of standards at the beginning of the project. These kind of application, real-life, genuine learning activities, that is proven to be the most effective way to address standards. And you can see, if you put a complex enough project together, you can see exactly how many you can address, and the students can show what they know throughout the project.
And for the audience, this is front and back, and another page there, of standards, and then just a couple more on there. So that's very impressive.
Very impressive. And these are educational standards that are required by the state of North Carolina? Okay, our next school in the school spotlight is Moyac Middle School. Principal Dr. Davenport, I think, had a death in the family. So we have somebody standing in for him tonight. Lanity Warden, science teacher.
That's pretty impressive. You haven't even done anything yet, and you're getting a star on the board. So that's pretty good.
I would just like to thank all my fans.
And before you begin, congratulations on being the coach for the state championship cheerleading team.
And I think it'd be a great cross-school activity if we brought Shawboro's minds to Moyac Middle for our cafeteria because we could use a little of that.
Right.
Okay, the eighth grade team really wanted to get into cross-curricular type of lesson planning. And so we tried it a little bit last year, and then we really kind of put a focus on it this year with using a book called The Weirdo by Theodore Taylor. So first, I just want to talk a little bit about what cross-curricular is. Cross-curricular activities are lessons that require teachers to make connections in different areas of study by making sure that you're focusing on unifying concepts throughout each area. The integration allows students to engage in relevant and meaningful activities and discussions that connect with their learning to real-world situations. Studies have shown that hands-on investigation of concepts that move beyond that conceptual, "I know it, I understand it," and going into deeper where they get to apply and create things, help make it more interesting in their learning and helps them actually retain the information that they're getting in class. So this year, we met as a team prior to school starting, and we started brainstorming ideas. So what we did was we just laid out papers. We put down our standards in each subject area, math, science, social studies, and English, and looked to see where we can make a connection within that first nine weeks. Ms. Turner here was the one who had the book and actually had something to get us started with, to start the activities. And the book involves places around Currituck County. It's fictional, but it uses like Currituck County, it uses Virginia area. So it was a little, is relevant, great to small swamps, it was relevant to them. So we thought we'd use it. So then, once we figured out what book we were using, we decided that we all needed to read it so that we knew how it would fit into our curriculums. And then we met a site, like two science teachers, our math teachers, English, and social studies, to decide how we wanted to devise our lessons. So I'm going to kind of explain the teacher aspect for each of them, and then we're going to have a student talk to you about how it was related with our field trip that we went on and what we did in the classroom. For science, we kind of used our academic support time, and we had to research different water sources, like swamps, estuaries, marshes, and really tried to focus on ecosystems, tried to focus on water quality, wanted them to look at how human impacts on that water system can make a difference with ecosystems that, you know, with the food that we're eating. So we kind of focused on that. They created posters, some created videos. These skills and standards are being used in science still now. So we're going to be able to make these connections through our hydrosphere unit, through our ecosystem unit, and so on. So Ian Stare is actually going to come up here and talk about science in particular.
Hello, my name is Ian Stare, and I'm here on behalf of Moyac Middle School's eighth grade. As many of you know, we went on a field trip to the Great Decimal Swamp, November twentieth, two thousand eighteen. We went there to relate the Great Decimal Swamp to every core class we have. Science, math, social studies, and English Language Arts. Today, I'll be discussing the Great, or how the Great Decimal Swamp relates to our science core class. When we arrived at the swamp, we were told that there are going to be four stations consisting of two trails, an indoor scavenger hunt, and water testing. I'll be covering water testing station as it relates most to our science core class. When we got to the classroom, Park Ranger Katie discussed what we would be testing. She said that we would test the water's dissolved oxygen level, the pH of the water, and the microorganisms that live in the water. She then gave three students each a task, each of the things that she said we would be testing. I found this very interesting and thought about how it related to our science class. During this time, the earth science class was learning about weather and climate. We talked about how the pH in the oceans, or we talked about the pH in the oceans because due to pollutants in our atmosphere, the oceans are actually having a lower pH because they're absorbing so much carbon dioxide. This relates to the pH test we did on the trip. During this unit, we also touched on dissolved oxygen, which we tested on the trip as well. The eighth grade science class talked about microbiology and ecosystems around the same time. The microorganisms in the water go through mitosis and meiosis around the same time. The microorganisms in the water, oh, sorry. Reproduction is a huge part of microbiology and understanding how cells and microorganisms work. In the Great Decimal Swamp, bears, trees, algae, and other organisms create a big ecosystem. The niche of every animal in the food chain represents the theme of ecosystems. In conclusion, the trip was a blast and very interesting. So I thank you very much and have a good night.
Okay, next, we're going to talk about math. And students were given historical book questions and routes that were actually used in the novel in order to find distances between two points. And Rachel Blue is going to talk about math.
What we did in our math class was we looked at a graph with the map of the Great Decimal Swamp on it. And we had to figure out the distance between the two points on the graph that were two places in the state park. So the first thing we did was we looked at the side lengths, and then we used Pythagorean theorem to find the distance. And then, at our field trip, we walked some of the trails. So it really gave us a sense of what we were really looking at on that map. Thank you.
With social studies, they use their geography unit, and they focused on the Great Decimal Swamp during the George Washington era. And, ooh, I'm sorry, Teresa Dowd.
Hello, my name is Teresa Dowd. As you know, the Moyac Middle School eighth grade went on a field trip to the Great Decimal Swamp after spending time in each class learning about the swamp itself. I've been asked to share with you how we associate what we learned in social studies class with what we learned on site. In social studies, we learned about the multiple fires in the swamp and how the peat soil contributes to these long-lasting fires. On site, we saw real-life peat soil and learned even more about the contents of it. We also learned about the Washington Canal and how George Washington's slaves labored for twelve years digging out the canal in an attempt to drain it. Even though they ended up giving up on the idea, we learned about how their attempt would end up benefiting others. We were able to store the water from the canal. We were able to store the water from the, we were able to store the water from the canal and take it on voyages for drinking water due to its tannic acids that prevent it from spoiling. Aside from attempts to dig out the canal, we learned how many escaped slaves made small communities deep within the Great Decimal Swamp. We walked through the swamp and really understood how hard it must have been to live in areas with so much dense brush and where the trees were packed so tightly together. I think I can speak for everyone in my grade when I say that we never truly appreciated how rich history is right here in our area. To see it and feel it and stand where George Washington stood was amazing. Thank you.
Okay, and last but not least, um, English students were analyzing actions of main characters and the main debate in the book dealt with fictional Currituck County hunters and an organization that wanted to save bears. So now we have Kaylee Ramos.
Thank you. So we read the book The Weirdo and it pretty much had to do with the different animals and plants that live in the Decimal Swamp. When we went to the Decimal Swamp, we were, some classes were able to see like the deers and stuff and the plants that live, that inhabited in the swamp. This really helped us better understand like the different things that we were reading about in the book. We also had some choices when we went on like the trails and stuff. The people who helped us go on the trail asked us if we really believed that people should hunt and it kind of helped us with our decision to see if they, we should hunt or if we shouldn't. Thank you.
And I think if I'm not mistaken, you guys also did a paper on that with the debate? Okay. Um, so basically, we tried to really concentrate on tying in all our subject areas to really hope that we're going, they'll retain it because they're not just getting it in math, they're getting it in math, English, science, social studies. So they're constantly getting these key concepts within all our standards. Each of these skills are still being utilized in the classroom as we continue with our curriculum, so we can still go back to it. But we felt that by creating a cross-curricular environment, we're not only showing our students how all subject areas are related, but how those are used in the real world. Um, I know as an eighth grade team, we found validity in doing this type of activity followed by the field trip where they're seeing those connections. Um, and we know we still have more work to do to really make it more seamless, um, but we really enjoyed it and looking forward to making that better even next year. Our goal is to help our students to dive deeper into all of our content area standards and that comes from letting them see how real-world what we are doing really is. Because we want our students to carry these same skills to each one of our classrooms when they go to high school, when they go to college, when they find a job, and pretty much when they're going through life, that they can use these same skills that they're learning in the classroom. So, that's it.
Could you have the students come up to the microphone and say their name once again?
I'm Ian Starett.
I'm Kaylee Ramos.
I'm Rachel Blue.
I'm Teresa Dowd.
Any of the board have any questions for anyone? Okay, Ian, I have a question for you. You said the pH in the ocean is going down because of the dissolved carbon dioxide?
Yeah, it's, it's lowering actually instead of getting higher because, um, the carbon dioxide, it's getting absorbed and it's actually making the oyster shells weaker and causing the seafood to decrease. And so like a lot of people who eat seafood cannot eat it anymore because the shells are so weak.
And that also means that the ocean's becoming more acidic, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And, uh, was it Teresa? I've got a question for you. You mentioned something about the peat catching on fire?
Yes, the peat soil, um, it's very flammable and normally it catches on fire very easily and then it'll smolder underground for a while and the fire will pop up somewhere else.
Weeks. It will smolder for weeks. I taught at Moyac Elementary School when we had it for weeks.
Well, when I was superintendent, we had smoke in the school so bad up at Moyac, I had to call school off there for a day.
Yes.
Because of the peat was on fire.
Yes.
So, anyway, thank you for your comments.
Good job.
What a great lesson.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll have the recognition of the student holiday card winners. And if the board would come down front with me.
Well, it's with great pleasure that I can announce the 2018-2019 card selection student winners. And first of all, I'd like to thank all of the participants who took part of this contest for Christmas cards to be chosen to send out to our community. But I also want to thank our art teachers. At Shawboro and Moyac Elementary School, Marcy Sawyer, um, works with the students in that area. Amy Baker is at Central Griggs Jarvisburg Elementary. Heather Garner, she's at Knott's Island Elementary. Jason Laterno, Currituck County, um, Currituck Middle, I'm sorry. Krista Culpepper, Moyac Middle School. Anita Rabino is at Currituck High School. And Claire Vinick is at Currituck High School. Well, to announce our student winners, I'd like to say that they will receive a framed card, a monetary award, and all of these beautiful cards will be sent out to all of our staff at Currituck County Schools, our District One Schools, and to our community leaders. The first, um, chosen card was Kaitlin Brown. She's from the 11th grade at Currituck County High School. And as you notice, um, on the TV, she did a beautiful snowman. Kaitlin? Congratulations.
Thank you.
And, um, they're going to give you an award right there, sweetie. Our second, um, holiday chosen card is the Christmas tree from Nora Kane. She also attends Currituck County High School. She's a 10th grade student and it's a beautiful Christmas tree. Nora? And Hayden Ray did a beautiful duck and lighthouse card for us. He also attends Currituck County High School. He is a 10th grader. And our, our, um, snow globe, which is a beautiful card, was done by Aislinn Lanigan from Moyac Middle School. She is an eighth grade student. Let's give her a round of applause. Just get out a little bit more. Smile. Let's try one more. One more smile. Thank you. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Okay, next we'll have the recognition of Exceptional Teacher of Excellence, Molly Hurdle by Kim McClellan, interim director of the Exceptional Children's Programs.
Good evening, board members, student board members, and Mr. Stefanik. I have the pleasure of recognizing Ms. Sharon Hurdle or Ms. Molly to anyone that knows her. She is an institution in Currituck County. She started out as a teacher assistant with the Exceptional Children's Program, um, studied and went and got her teaching degree. And back when I was originally EC Director, she saved my life by coming to work with us. And she has one of the most challenging yet rewarding jobs, um, working with our separate-setting students with autism. And anyone that has worked with Ms. Molly knows Ms. Molly. She's touched their hearts and touched our lives. So we are blessed to have her. She's also one of the most humble people and is not enjoying this recognition at all, but she's well-deserving and we thank you. And we have this plaque for you from Currituck County. She was not able to be here last month when you all recognized the other teachers because she was in Greensboro, being recognized by the state, so we thank you.
Molly, congratulations and thank you very much for all you do for the children of Currituck County.
Just like to say, I had the pleasure of working with Ms. Molly at Central for several years and she truly is an amazing individual and teacher. Thank you, Ms. Molly.
Okay, next item on the agenda is election of officers. And before I turn it over to Mr. Stefanik, who will call for the election of the chairman of the Board of Ed, I would just like to, uh, thank the Board of Education. I've been chairman for eight years and because of, uh, personal reasons, I decided to step down, you know, and take a break. I still will be on the board, still be very active, but I'd like to thank the board for all their support for the eight years that I was chairman. So now I will turn it over to Superintendent Stefanik.
Thank you, Dr. Dobney. As I've mentioned, every year at this time, uh, this is my favorite time of the, uh, of the school board calendar year because I get the microphone and, uh, none of the board members are in charge of this part of the meeting. It's all mine, uh, and so I try to stretch it out as much as I can. This is, uh, the organizational part of the meeting and we start off with, uh, nominations for Chairman of the Board. Uh, so do I have nominations for Chairman of the Board?
I'd like to nominate Karen Etheridge.
Do I have a second for that nomination?
I'd like to make a second.
Any other discussion or any other nominations? All right, all those in favor of Karen Etheridge as Chairwoman of the Board, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We don't have anybody left, so I don't think there's any opposed. Congratulations, Ms. Etheridge, you're the new Chairwoman or Chairperson of the Board of Education.
It's appropriate to call her Chairwoman.
Okay, all right. I'll go with that then. Chairwoman. Please congratulate Ms. Etheridge as she takes over the seat of Chairwoman.
Don't drink her water.
Yeah, don't drink my water. I don't want that cold.
She's got a cold.
Now that they've moved seats, please join me in congratulating our, our new Chairwoman, uh, Ms. Karen Etheridge.
I would like to thank my fellow board members for giving me this opportunity. I really appreciate the confidence and trust that you've placed in me.
All right, Karen, now, uh, that's it for my time on the microphone. Uh, I hand it over to you and, uh, you run the nominations for Vice Chairperson or Vice Chairman.
Okay. At this time, we'd like to open the floor to nominate the Vice Chairman for the Currituck County Board of Education.
I'd like to nominate Janet Rose.
I would like to second that nomination. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Janet Rose will be the Vice Chairwoman for the Currituck County Board of Education. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have the approval and action is required on this. And I'd like to, um, is there any discussion on the approval of the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve it.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. We now have the public comment session. This is if anyone has signed up to speak publicly here at our meeting. And Yvette, did we have anyone sign up tonight? Thank you very much. At this time, we have our student, student board member reports. We have Kealan Hartman.
Thank you, board. Uh, so I'll start off with Moyac Elementary. MES wrapped up Care-Verby by successfully collecting items for both pediatric care patients at CHKD led by Mrs. Hughes' fifth-grade class and also military care packages led by Ms. Allison Morgan, MES alumni. December is also an interactive month for students and parents. In classrooms, students are busy learning all about the various holidays around the world as well as continuing to maintain a math community. Leadership continues to be a focus at MES, both in the classroom and throughout the building. This, this month's group, group of students of the month were celebrated for their strong display of courage. Our MES Student Ambassador leaders will be getting the chance to give out positive behavior prizes during our annual sing-along and all are invited to the annual MES kindergarten play put on by our youngest Panthers on Tuesday, December 18th, 9:00 AM in the gym. Next up is Jarvisburg Elementary. December is a busy month at JES. On December 1st, we hosted Santa with our first annual snack with Santa. The big guy gave a performance to remember. Families enjoyed visiting with Santa, making their own cocoa concoctions, and creating an ornament to take home. It was a great night. We look forward to all the fun that is yet to come. On Monday, December 10th, JES welcomes the laser science show. The gym will be the place to be for everything laser. JES will hold its ugly sweater day on Monday, December 17th, 2018. Check out our Facebook page for all the ugly sweaters from students and staff alike. On December 18th, JES will have its first-ever Grinch Day. Stop in to see everything Grinch from STEM activities to reading and math-themed fun in all classrooms. We hope you can also join us for our sing-along on Wednesday, December 19th. It will be a day full of singing, fellowship, and games. From all of us at JES to all of you, have a very merry Christmas and a blessed New Year. Enjoy your break. And then to, uh, from Central Elementary, Central finished out the month of November by synergizing and showing our support, showing our support for Trenton Elementary in Jones County. CES, with the help of a private donor, was able to send over 302 totes and several bags of supplies, hats, gloves, and a few treats for the students. For the rest of December, CES is proud to host the CCMS Band on Monday, December 17th. And we'll have Pajama Day on Tuesday, December 18th, and our annual sing-along starting at 9:00 AM on Wednesday, December 19th as well. All are welcome to attend and merriest wishes from the Eagles of CES. I now pass it on to Sydney.
Hi there. I'll start with Shawboro Elementary. This week Shawboro is hosting a Christmas food drive to collect items to create food baskets for six families. We are also sponsoring 30 of our children with gifts for the Christmas holiday. This is our third year partnering with Fellowship Baptist Church to fill shoeboxes for Christmas around the world. SES kids and staff will fill 20 boxes for children in less privileged countries. Our students have been learning how the Christmas holiday is celebrated in other countries by hosting our annual Christmas around the world activities. Upcoming events, Wednesday, September 12th, the Moyac Middle School Chorus and Band will perform for Shawboro's students at 1:30 in the gym. December 14th is a huge day of events for our school. We will have our annual Pajama Day, Spirit Day, and Mr. O'Brien will host our sing-along at 1:30 in the gym from From 5:00 to 7:30 p.m., we will have our Cookies and Cocoa with Santa event where students can take selfies with Santa, eat cookies, and drink hot chocolate, play games, listen to Christmas music, and make crafts. There will be other food items for sale along with our annual basket raffle and a holiday wreath auction. Finally, we are partnering with businesses to coordinate advertisement sales for our second annual booster-athon. The advertisement puts business logos on the back of students' shirts and it's done for the purpose of providing each child with a shirt for the event for free. If you would like to, more information, please contact Mrs. Nelson at Charbro. We hope that everyone has a wonderful holiday. I will now move on to Greg's Elementary. Our senior teach today went amazingly well. GES was so grateful to have such a turnout. The Kurutuck Middle School 7th grade band is coming to visit on the 17th. Our PBSI event for good behavior will be on December 18th. On December 19th, we will have the GES sing-along to kick off the start of the holiday break. GES has an early release day on the 19th. GES hopes all of our Mallards have a wonderful holiday break. Now I'll move it on to Colin.
All right, I'm gonna start with Kurutuck County Middle. It is hard to believe that winter break is upon us. Last week, we celebrated outstanding behavior in academics for the first nine weeks by taking 251 students to play laser tag. This was a great opportunity to recognize our students who are working hard and making good choices as well as giving our staff opportunities outside the classroom to build deeper relationships with their students. On Tuesday night, we sponsored our first family movie night. We showed two classic Christmas movies and had a pizza dinner intermission. Next Tuesday, our band will be showcasing their talents in the Holiday Band Concert. The first performance will be at 2:00 p.m. and the second at 6:30. Come out and hear our talented students perform. The students and staff at CCMS would like to wish the Board and their families a safe and happy holiday. Next, I have Moyoc Middle. With the holiday season upon us, we are busy at MMS. Our second dance of the year, the Winter Wonderland Dance, will be held on Friday, December 7th from 6:00 to 8:00. Come out and dance the night away. Our Arts Department will be celebrating the holiday season with two concerts. A Holiday Chorus Concert will be held next week on Friday, December 14th at 6:30 and it will feature 6th, 7th, and 8th grade chorus students. We look forward to families supporting this event. A Band Concert will be held on Monday, December 17th at 6:30. We would love the community to come out and share the spirit of the holidays with us. Students in Mrs. Frazier's and Mrs. Chambers' class use Sphero Sheets, tiny round robots, to learn the basics of JavaScript's coding. Students used problem-solving, communication, and math skills to navigate their Sphero on a golf course accurately. Students and staff are looking forward to the festivities that December brings as well as the chance to rejuvenate the Christmas break. And after that, I pass it on to Mallory.
All right. At JPNAP, Coach Davenport is hosting a Spartan Night Out at Flippers Arcade in Laser Tag in Grandy on December 6th. The JPNAP PTA is officially up and running, meeting next on Tuesday, December 11th. The JPNAP Annual Ugly Christmas Sweater Day is scheduled for Wednesday, December 12th. COA exams start December 11th and end December 17th. JPNAP exams slash EOCs begin December 13th and end December 19th. So far, 12 of our class of 2019 Spartan seniors have been accepted to 23 colleges and universities in North Carolina, Maine, Florida, and Virginia. Congratulations Spartans. Colin's one of them.
Really?
He was about to say that. From Kurutuck County High, "We are so proud of the opportunity to have members of our Air Force ROTC unit in Pearl Harbor throughout this weekend and on National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day tomorrow. Many thanks to our School Board and Colonel Keith Grimes for assisting us in creating such an incredible learning experience for these young people. The journey of our cadets can be followed on the CCHS Twitter site. The holiday season will continue to be celebrated with our annual Fall Band Concert on December 13th, followed by our Choral Concert on December 18th. It was a banner event at CCHS on Monday as we honored our Fall Student Athletes at our annual banquet, including recognition of our state champion volleyball team and cheerleading squad. Winter interscholastics are now well underway. A variety of community service projects designed to assist others at this special time of the year are also underway as the Knights continue a wonderful tradition of giving."
Okay, so as you guys noticed, we didn't mention Knott's Island yet. Ms. Gorza has challenged us this week.
Oh, really? Okay, tell us more.
In the Christmas spirit, she gave us her report in the tune of Grandma Got Ran Over by a Reindeer. Fair warning, we are not on American Idol.
Need a microphone. Right in the middle. We had one there.
So we're gonna play the music in the background and hope we can stay in tune.
And we're sorry in advance, by the way.
That's okay. Can't wait.
I'm so scared.
Turn on your mic.
Okay. It's loading.
It's buffering.
Oh, no.
It's just an ad. Give us one second.
Pneumonia, am I right? That's what the ad's about, okay. All right, ready? Six, seven. Coming.
(singing) As I got ran over by a reindeer, driving home from our school Christmas Eve, you can say there's no such thing as Santa, but as for us KI kids, we believe. Our December was full of fun sill. We bought gifts for the Santa shop. Ladies helped wrap the presents, even the one for our local cop. Fourth and Fifth had a visual field trip with the North Carolina Museum of Art. Interacted with webcams and showed the docent that they were really smart. Ms. Gorza got run over by a reindeer, driving home from our school Christmas Eve, you can say there's no such thing as Santa, but as for us KI kids, we believe. On the 13th of December, we will be providing a free lunch. It will all be so yummy and we will all enjoy it a whole bunch. We want to thank the Ruetens for our fantastic movie night. Polar Express food and hot chocolate will make December 4th event out of sight. (singing) As I got run over by a reindeer, driving home from our school Christmas Eve, you can say there's no such thing as Santa, but as for us KI kids, we believe.
Round and out the final week, we will be at our Christmas bazaar.
December 17th visit from Fireman and Santa, who will be the event's shining star. On December 18th, before we break, is caroling for our folk. We will sing along so wonderfully that the audience will leave totally stoked.
Just like you guys are right now.
As I got hopefully wonked. Driving home from our school Christmas Eve, you can say there's no such thing as Santa, but as for us KI kids, we believe.
Don't do that. Woo! Great! Great job!
And lastly, Ms. Gorza says, "Happy and safe holidays from Knott's Island Elementary."
Oh, very good. And y'all are really good sports about.
Oh, my goodness. Doesn't get any better than that.
I can picture a reindeer on some of those roads you have to drive on coming back from Knott's Island.
Reindeer, Rudolph.
You missed our before show at Pass the Saw. We were really jamming to that.
Oh, the entertainment.
Yeah, I think we made a little bit of a ruckus at Pass the Saw.
That's wonderful. All right, we have discussion on Policy 6420, Contracts with the Board, and Policy 9120, Bidding for Construction Work. Want to help me out with that, Mark?
Yeah, this was the policy two Board meetings ago. It was voted on to change the maximum contract amount from $50,000 to $90,000 before it needed Board approval. And there was a reconsideration requested at the last Board meeting to see if we could revert back to the original language of contracts of $50,000 or more be brought to the Board before they're approved.
Okay, I'd like to open it up to the Board members for discussion.
Was, if I remember correctly, the change was because of something that the State Board recommended, is that correct?
Yeah, the State Board and the attorneys. $90,000 is the threshold for all types of contracts to, you know, come before the Board. And I believe it's also the threshold for the formal bidding process to begin. And so the recommendation was if you have everything line up on one number, then all the contracts are aligned. But as said at the last meeting, it's totally up to the Board how many contracts you want to see before we approve them, whether it's 50,000 or 90,000.
Well, this policy was originally passed five to nothing, right? Five-zero?
Yes.
Yeah, it was passed five to nothing. And I asked that we bring it back up because I personally reconsidered it and I think I made an error of judgment. We're looking forward of, or not looking forward to, but we're faced with going into our next budget for our next year with a fund balance of like $424,000. And I'm not suggesting that anybody wouldn't try to make the wisest choices when they're spending money, but there's a big difference between, at least in the money I work with, between 50 and 90,000 dollars. And so I think sometimes if you have different perspectives, meaning multiple people looking at something, it might not always come out the way that one person interprets it. So if one person's approving 90,000 dollars, they're looking at how they view it in their opinion. But if five people have to review it before the money's spent, maybe it would just be a little bit better oversight. And so, yes, I was one of the five that approved it and I'm the one that asked that we reconsider it. And at this time, I think it's a bad idea. So there you have it.
I just have a question about the sentence that we struck out right before what school principals may do, that the superintendent shall report to the Board all contracts and amendments approved by you under the policy. I think it's a good idea to report to us monthly if you've done anything.
Well, that part of the policy is still there, that we report out anything, anything that's, we report out the contracts that we have and if changes happen during the month, we put a listing out there as part of the Board meeting.
Okay. But over that threshold or in?
I'm seeing it struck out.
So you want to revert back to the 50,000? It struck out.
Yeah, he wants to revert back to the 50,000. Janet's comment was that...
He's not, doesn't have to report to us monthly.
Is that what the strikeout was? That, okay, he does anyway, but...
But we want to keep it in the policy?
But it's on the second page that he reports it in above.
Okay.
It was listed twice.
I see.
Here it is right here.
Okay, and that's why it was struck out.
So he reports, but we don't have to approve it?
Right.
Right. So...
Anything above 50,000, you'll hear about.
Right.
Or if, let's say we have a $35,000 contract and then there was an addition of the contract and it goes over 50,000, that's an amendment that would take it up there and then that would add into that list as well.
Well, aren't most of these projects, capital-outlay projects, we've already approved, you know, through the budget?
I would assume. Lori, you back there?
Oh, there you are.
Well, that is really, you know, I know you're saying it was on the second page, but it's not exactly on the second page. The first page said that he should report to the Board all contracts and amendments that he approved. And the next page says ranging from 50,000 and above.
Which would be, right now, they're doing anything 50, or well, before we approved the 90, we were doing 50 and above.
Well, not according to this. It was like all had to be reported, but...
But the policy requires 50 and above, so really, it was 50 and above.
Yes.
Okay. It says all contracts. I've misinterpreted, I suppose, but it does say all.
Some of the stuff that's gonna come up from time to time isn't necessarily on the capital-outlay budget. Things that happen...
That's true, that's true.
To chillers and septic systems and God knows what. And there's a big difference between 50 and 90,000 dollars. And we're in tight times. And I want to make sure that everybody's getting the best bang for their buck and we're offering the highest level of service. And I want to make sure the money gets spent correctly. And I'm not comfortable with it. If you guys are, so be it. I'm not.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Yes, I'd like to go back to Lori and, you know, restate my question. Aren't most of the projects that are 90,000 or between 50 and 90,000, capital-outlay projects that the Board has already approved to be in the budget?
Probably half, because we have the exceptional children's contracts and it's hard for me to say, I don't have the list in front of me. Yes, half of them are capital-outlay.
What are some of the ones other than exceptional children that are non-capital-outlay that are current expense projects?
The concierge cleaning contract, that's from the supplies, CHKD for the athletic trainer, the lawn mowing contract, Waste Industries, which is the waste renewal...
Dumpsters.
Which we just negotiated, yeah.
Yes.
Three-year license for...
Well, on the CHKD, that's a set amount each year, right, under contract that we've already?
Seventy thousand, I think.
It's under contract.
Seventy-five?
Seventy-five, under contract.
We entered into that for three years, Lori?
Three or five. And then the children contracts, which are the state government, and the workers' comp insurance.
And you had a couple at an earlier meeting this year, remember, where the contractors would give us, they would hold our price, you know, at this year's rate if we signed up for multiple years. And then we found out from our attorney that since it's a contract for multiple years, we have to add together the years. And so then some of those years that were 30,000 per year, it was a three-year contract, then it ended up being a $90,000 contract that we brought in front of you.
Okay.
So some of those can get up to those higher numbers as well.
Could I ask Ms. Trussell a question right quick? You mentioned a lawn mowing contract that was in excess of 50,000 dollars. Is that like an annual amount or is that for multiple years or what is that?
Annual.
Okay. Do you know if that goes out on bid on a certain timeline?
It did not go to bid this year.
Okay. And that's kind of what I'm talking about, people, okay? I want to make sure the money is getting spent correctly and we're not bidding out lawn mowing contracts. I got a problem with that and I got a question about that. We need to be bidding that stuff out.
Okay, it's these two policies.
So I'd make a motion that we change it back to fifty thousand dollars.
I'd second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have policy twenty-four fifty, suspension of board policy action. And Mr. Stefanik, if you'd like to explain policy thirty-four ten, testing and assessment program?
Currently, our testing and assessment program talks about end-of-course exams having a twenty percent effect on the student's final grade in their classes. This year, the standards have changed in mathematics, and the mathematics, and of course, course exams are changing, and so the state goes into a standard setting or a baseline mode where they study the results of the first test, and so the results will not be available from the state back to the school systems in time to use that number as twenty percent of the student's final grade. So in order for the tests that are upcoming next week at NAP and in January for the high school, that's semester time, we would need to suspend this policy that says you're going to use twenty percent of the grade because the grade won't be available for use. And just as a precursor, as you suspend this, when we get into the policy revisions, that's actually going to be one of the exceptions to the twenty percent as the state continues to look at standards and they continue to revise end-of-course exams. I believe they've already have it on the calendar that next year, the English end-of-course exam will be brand new, and it'll be the first time, and so then the English classes will run into the same situation. When we change the whole policy for the future, you won't have to suspend it because that exception will be in the policy. But for now, it's not there, and so we have to...
Have to vote on it.
We have to vote to suspend this policy for the semester exams that are coming up right now.
Well, I make a move that we suspend the policy to...
I'll second it.
Is this the same policy that we need to ask, talk about with the exam exemption? Does that need to be a part of this motion as well, or is that a separate thing?
When you're exempt from...
Yeah, the mayor, the will.
Yeah.
If the board wants to make it part of the same conversation, we can. Otherwise, you can do it separately.
What would you like to do?
Well, go on with their motion. They've made that.
All right, we have a first and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes?
And the second part is that in the same policy, there is a, an attendance incentive that students that don't have any unexcused absences and they miss very few days, is it three or less?
I think two.
Two, two, two or less. They can be, the policy says they may be exempt from the final exam, and what the high school handbook says is they will be exempt from the final exam. So if the board would like to go with what is stated in the student handbook, you'd have to suspend this policy for that section as well.
So I make a motion that we suspend it and go with, with what is written in the Currituck County High School handbook.
I second that motion. All in favor?
Wait, discussion?
Yes, please. Did you say they missed two or less days and they have a B, and then they can be exempt from the exam?
That's what the policy says.
Yeah, the way the policy says it's a...
To encourage attendance, yes.
Right, yeah.
If they had an, if they had an A...
I'm thinking of the old-fashioned language. It was either a B or an A.
I just think we're taking away the teachers...
Well, the policy doesn't say may in the Currituck County High School handbook.
It says will.
Yeah, but that's the handbook. The policy is what we... Am I correct? The policy is...
The policy, the policy is the policy.
Policy supersedes.
And the handbook might have an error, and that we need to change our policy if we wanted to make the error correct.
Yeah.
What, what is, what has been, what happened last year, Sidney, at the high school with exam exemption?
If you have a C with one absence, then you don't have to take the exam, right?
What?
And with C, what is it?
Was it a C or a B?
You could get exempt with a C, though, still.
Holy smokes. No, I don't want to do that.
If you only have like one or something.
Well, the policy doesn't say anything about a C.
Okay, well, we need to make sure they're adhering to the policy.
I know rubrics for school, when you get into each of those classes, it tells you your requirements, so it varies.
And that's keeping it up to the teacher. I think that's what I'm saying. You know, we just automatically are saying if you, you're exempt, if you didn't, if you have the A, and I think the teacher needs to have some input in this.
I would agree.
So if it's, if it's a C, if it's a C, I don't think they should be exempt.
I don't remember any...
I don't think they should be exempt on a C, whether the teacher's got the input or not.
Right.
This, this is what the policy reads. As an incentive reward for attendance and academic performance, students who are absent no more than three days from a class during a semester and maintain a ninety semester average or above, or have two absences or less and maintain an eighty semester average or above, are exempt from final exams, except in those classes that have state EOCs, NCFE, or CTE tests because they're required. A student who is exempt from exam will be counted absent if not in attendance on exam day, however, this absence will not count against the student for course credit.
But again, you're reading from the student handbook. That's not the policy. That's the student handbook.
And, and the board, just as a reminder, the board revised this policy a couple of meetings ago, and we didn't have, you know, a chance to reprint the handbooks, and the new policy says may be exempt with an A...
Regardless of the absences.
Just making sure you didn't have any unexcused absences, and with, I'm having a Dr. Dobney moment with my eyes.
Okay.
And then the student with a B average has to have two days or less absent and no unexcused.
But the verbage is may, not will.
Right, in both sentences, it's may.
Well, the problem is that our students that are there...
Reading the handbook.
They have read the handbook, and they feel like, I mean, there's a lot of kids there that make sure they don't miss the school so they can be exempt, and, you know, if they're in one teacher's class who says, yes, I agree, and then they're in another one that says, it says may, then, you know, we've kind of led our students to think one way that's going to happen. Anyway.
Straight time, yeah.
Is Dr. Mattany, he's not here, is he? No.
I'm comfortable with the policy we have. He just informed me, and I don't know where I've been, but an eighty is the lowest B now.
Right.
I'm sorry, say that.
Eighty is a B.
Okay. I wish it was...
But the policy we have says may, not will.
Correct, and I'm happy with the policy he just read.
I'm fine with that, if teachers will, with the eighty or ninety, I'm not if it's a C.
No, I'm not either.
And I can, I can have Dr. Mattany check on that...
Okay.
To make sure that teachers aren't, you know, taking the flexibility too far.
Yeah.
And, and just a reminder for the board and the community, there are very few classes that students have the opportunity to be exempt from...
That's true.
...a test because the state has put requirements on many, many of our classes.
Sidney, how many would you be able, may be exempt from this time? I know you're not for math or English or...
Do you mean in my current schedule?
Yes.
None.
None.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's very few. I think my daughter has the possibility of being exempt from one out of four, so...
So, want to vote?
Yes. Any more discussion?
Now, again, you're, you're voting whether or not to...
Insert the language.
Suspend, well, not change the policy, you're not in that mode. Suspend the policy, which would mean that it's not may, it's will to line up with the student handbook. If you vote not to suspend the policy, then the may language is there, and then the teachers have the option of exempting the students from the test or not.
All right.
We want to keep what we have.
The policy that we implemented a couple months ago, that's what we want to keep.
Then we would...
Then you're not, then you're not suspending any policy.
May, it's up to the teacher, but they have to have an eighty or ninety or above.
Right.
But I'm fine with that.
So that's a no.
We vote no.
So that means you're, you're, you either don't act on the motion, or we just suspended it for the twenty percent rule, and then we're done with that policy.
I make a motion that we suspend it and that we're fine with the policy as written.
I think we have a motion on, and a second on the floor.
Did you have a second already? Okay, then you have to vote.
Okay.
Yeah, if you suspend, that means you're going to will. If you don't suspend, you're sticking with the policy with the may language.
So the motion is to suspend?
Yes.
All in favor to suspend?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
That's what we're staying with, that's it.
No, this was, it is confusing. It was to keep, keep the policy.
If you agree, if you agree with the suspension, you're going with the language in the handbook. If you want to stay with this, then your vote is a no.
It's okay.
All those against the policy?
To suspend it?
To suspend it. Say aye.
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 All opposed?
Okay. No, we had three ayes.
Wait, wait, let me, let me, how about, how about if, how about if I stated, how about if I stated, yeah?
Praise it, because it's confusing.
She changed the motion.
No, here, yeah, here's the motion, here's the motion. All those that want the handbook to be in effect, the handbook, not the policy, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those that want the current policy with the may language, may exempt language, to stay intact, vote by saying no.
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 Okay, okay, you got it right. The policy's in, we have to notify the high school that the handbook has a misprint, and it doesn't line up with policy.
And how are you going to address that with their exams coming up in a couple of weeks when they think that they've been following one rule?
We'll talk to the five or six teachers that have that option, and we'll tell them what, what was decided tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, policy number two.
Okay.
Is policy thirty-two twenty. Well, that, we had one and one B, is what we had to do there. All right, policy number two...
She's looking on that side, not this side.
Is school trips, and this has everything to do with the current trip that the ROTC is taking to Hawaii. We noticed a couple of days before they left that the school, the current school trips policy said that we will approve field trips in the continental United States. Since Hawaii is floating out in the middle of the Pacific Ocean, it is not part of the continental United States, so we had to do an informal phone poll of the board to make sure that the plane could take off on time for the ROTC trip. Tonight, we need to take a formal vote on suspending the school trip policy so that the students formally have approval that they can take the trip to Hawaii even though they're already there.
I move that we suspend the school trip policy.
I second it.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, and I agree with that part of that, but, you know, just since we pulled this policy up, I'd like for everybody to read item C in regards to cost, if you have the policy. It says, "Students must not be charged a fee for a trip that is an extension of the curriculum." And I believe all of their field trips are extensions of the curriculum, and we discussed this when we had our budget meeting earlier today, how we charge students so much to cover the gas and the driver, so we really should not be doing that, is that correct?
I'll have to talk about that because there's, there's some language in one of the other policies that talks about the actual definition of, you know, extending, you know, the curriculum and what you have to satisfy to do that, and I'll check that, and, and again, if, if that language holds up and we are not to be charging for field trips, then, then we have to make sure that all the expenses come out of our field trip fund.
I know that our teachers have to fill out the forms, and the last one I filled out when I was a teacher, you, you had to specify how it related to your curriculum, and I know we've got a lot of principals here, so are we still requiring that field trips are an extension of curriculum?
Well, well, and that, and that's, again, with the legal folks, relating to the curriculum and extending the curriculum, that's what I have to find out if they, if those definitions are similar. Yeah, that's what I have to find out. And I don't...
To this policy.
I, you know, as a personal, as a superintendent and a former teacher and a former principal, I'd like to charge students nothing if we could get away with it, but if we have to charge a little bit to give them the experiences, then, then I'm in favor of that. But, I mean, if it says that, you know, you're not supposed to be charging anything that has educational value, then we have to find out exactly, you know, how that is defined in legal terms, and then we might have to change practice. I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Back to the suspension for the Hawaiian trip.
Oh, yeah.
That's where we are. I think Dr. Dobney made a motion. I don't know if anybody made a second.
There was a couple.
Yeah.
Okay, who, you make the motion?
I made the motion.
They all made the motion, and we'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it?
And in the future, you know, as we're discussing first reads of many, many policies, if the board wants to consider taking out the word continental, in case any experiences like this are offered to our students again for Hawaii or Alaska, then, you know, if we thought that those would be great opportunities for the students, all that policy would need would just be the word continental taken out, and so we'll improve trips in the United States.
Okay.
Something to consider.
I'd like to do that.
Yeah, I would, too.
All right, we need approval for our consent agenda. I have a motion.
So moved.
I'll make a second.
Well, let's go ahead and do this. You need to go back to the field trip request.
Okay.
That's, again, that's just information.
Well, we made the motion a second, so we need to vote on it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
Go back to field trip requests.
Field trip requests, wherever you are.
Okay, field trip requests, Currituck County High School football, state playoffs, Crowton High School, Pine Knoll Shores, North Carolina, November seventeenth and eighteenth, they attended, and Currituck County High School, ROTC, they're actually in Honolulu, Hawaii as we speak.
And again, for the folks out there who may not know about this, ROTC actually being at Pearl Harbor for commemoration of Pearl Harbor Day is an amazing opportunity for our students, and I commend Colonel Grimes for, you know, have, keeping his eye out for military options that would allow us to be there.
Great experience for our students.
It really is. Okay, and now the consent agenda. Need a, okay, we've got that, okay. Information items, we have a work session coming up January third of two thousand nineteen, that's hard to believe, talking about two thousand nineteen already. Then the Board of Education meeting, January third, here at the historic Currituck County Courthouse, at six thirty PM.
January third.
All right, board member comments, Mr. Kradak?
Well, time's flying, and I hope everybody had a happy Thanksgiving, and looking forward to a Merry Christmas. And I'd like to thank, or congratulate, the three elected board members, Ms. Rose and Ms. Etheridge and Dr. Dobney. I'd like to also thank them, the Board of Education, and the superintendent, Mr. Stefanik, for, well, there's been several things, but anyhow, I've been a big opponent of combination classes, people probably get sick and tired of hearing about it over the years, but I'm happy to tell you... of hearing about it over the years. But I'm happy to tell you that when I first started talking about combination classes, we had 14 of them out of the six elementary schools, while one teacher taught two grades. And I'm happy to report to you that hopefully, with our new hire coming in just after the new year, we'll have successfully eradicated combination classes at the elementary level. And I really appreciate everybody on this board and Mr. Stefanic for making that happen, because I think it's going to make the lives of those kids and the lives and jobs of those teachers a whole lot easier. Now, obviously, it wasn't just because I was talking about it. The state did some classroom K through three size reductions. The board had acted on a few things along the way, but I'm just really proud to say that it, it's occurred. And people would flashback five or six years ago, they looked at me like I was speaking a foreign language. We've always had them. We're always, they'll be fine, and I could go on. But anyhow, I really, I really do mean it, and I thank you very much, and God bless Currituck County.
Thank you. Ms. Rose?
I would like to ask all of those watching and listening to please find a way that you can support the students in our schools. I go each Friday and read with a little buddy at Moyoc Elementary, and I enjoy it, and I hope she enjoys it. They're always looking for reading buddies. Many of the schools are, I know Moyoc Elementary is. So if you're interested in being a buddy, contact them. We've got winter athletics in full swing at our high school and our two middle schools, so go out and support our athletes. You can be involved that way. Our Currituck County High School chorus will be performing the Christmas program on December 18th at the high school at 7:00. Come out, if you want to get in the Christmas spirit, come out that evening and listen to our high school chorus. And I'd just like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Dr. Dobney?
Yes, this is a unique seat here. I got to look over Keelan's shoulder at what he was reading. And the print is so small, I can't believe you can see it. So not only are these guys good singers, they're, got great eyes, too. But then Sidney, Colin, and Mallory read from their cell phones, which had to be even smaller. It's like, I don't know how you do it. It's amazing. Anyway, I would like to, once again, thank everybody for the support for the eight years that I was a board chair. And this last month, I visited Currituck County Middle School, Currituck County High School, went to see a play that Buddy White wrote. It was called Yanni and Laurel, and it was really good, really good. And they actually played the sound where you're supposed to be able to tell whether the sound is saying yanni, or the sound is saying laurel. I heard it, what, two or three times? I still couldn't understand either one, so, which I'm probably the only person in there.
You can't see or hear. Is that what you're basically, what you're saying? Okay, okay.
Good point. What'd you say? I'd like to once again thank, or recognize the cheerleaders who won the state championship. And Lynette Ward, Warden was one of the coaches. She the only coach of the cheerleading team?
Sidney, is she the only coach?
We have a community coach helper, I think, with her.
I think there's one more, right, Sidney?
Amanda McLaughlin. I'm a basketball cheerleader. Amanda's also my coach, and I believe Chelsea Eflin helps out also.
Okay.
Was one of the coaches for somewhere, too.
Now, which is amazing. We've had three state championship teams in two years.
Go Knights!
All in girls' sports.
Yeah.
There, what does that tell you?
Anyway, I would like to wish everybody, I need to segue out of that one. I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Years, and hope everybody stays safe and sound during that period of time. And one of Karen's big challenges is getting ready to come up, and that's to see how long Superintendent Stefanic talks.
Ms. Craft?
Yes. I also attended the Yanni and Laurel play, which, by the way, was written by our own Buddy White. He did a fantastic job, and it was suggested that he could take it to Broadway, but we're hoping that he'll stay here, so. I also want to commend the Shawboro Elementary School for their presentation tonight. It's, it's an, it's very important that we're looking at environmental ways to protect children's hearings, certainly something that's important to me, as well as our middle school, Moyoc Middle School, and all that they were doing. It's very obvious that they're working to ensure that state standards are being met, and that they're taking that seriously, and it's very important. I also want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Stefanic?
This will be short. I wanted to go back to the two presentations tonight. A lot of times when people picture school, you know, they picture, you know, the students sitting in desks, and, you know, this bell goes off, and now we're doing math, and then the next bell goes off, and now you're doing science and English and so forth and so on. Both of these presentations tonight show the additional way that standards have to be addressed in this day and in, in, in society or in the world. The students have to understand how those standards apply to the real life, because I don't know too many adults that wake up in the morning and go, from 9:00 to 10:00, I'm going to do my math task today, and then from 10:00 to 11:00, I'm going to write on my English correspondence, and then from 11:00 to 12:00, I'm going to do this, and, oh, I get 12:00 to 12:30 is lunch. And that, you know, you don't do that. You, you embrace life, and you embrace problem solving using all the skills that you learned in school. So in addition to teaching independent standards or independent content areas, bringing the content areas together and giving the students extension activities into real life, that's, that's the power in education. And so I commend the two schools for their presentations tonight and what they do on a daily basis, and am hoping that more and more teachers every day, every week embrace that educational philosophy. As you heard Ms. Warden say, it's not easy that they gave this, this integrated unit with the dismal swamp a try, but that they have to go back in and they have to work more to make it more seamless and, and work more, more smoothly. And so it does take some extra effort, but the benefit the kids will receive from it is, is amazing. So I just wanted to commend them and kind of educate society in that this is where education needs to go, and then that will translate into the end of course exams and the end of grade exams being understood more completely.
Well, like the science, the fifth grade, science is all application. I mean, so you can memorize the stuff, but when the test comes, it's application.
Right, right. The old fashioned tests, we had pages and pages and pages, and I was a math teacher, so they were just problems, just lined up as, as, as far as your hand could keep flipping the pages. And you just did problem after problem after problem after problem. Now, the tests are set up where you may have to do some problems, but then you have to explain, you know, what the thought process was, what the problem solving process was that you used to, you know, to get that answer. And so it's the understanding of the overall process, let alone just the computation part of, of testing anymore.
That's wonderful.
And again, from the whole school district to the entire community, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year to everybody. Be safe.
Thank you. I too, visit a few of the schools here in the county, and I'm very proud of all our students and faculty and staff, and I'm proud to be able to represent you as the chairman for the Currituck County Board of Education. I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Be safe. And at this time, I would like to adjourn the December 2018 meeting.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.